Thanks so much for coming tonight. We really appreciate you guys being here. I know there was a lot going on tonight and it was kinda hard for some people, uh, but we so appreciate you guys being here. And today, we have some of our students who are the moderators and they will handle the, uh, event tonight. And we really appreciate you guys coming too. So, if you guys need anything, you just let Mrs. Jennings or, uh, Mrs. George know and they'll get it. Uh, over here, we have Kaylee O'Toole, we have Libby Faber, and we have Jackson Priest. So, they are gonna take it over.
Can we have a silence, a moment of silence for Covington District?
Yes, yes. So...
Good evening. My name is Jackson Priest. I'll be the moderator for tonight. I'm being helped by Libby Faber and Kaylee O'Toole. Libby will be drawing out questions and numbers to go in order. And then Kaylee will be letting you guys know when your time is up and like thirty seconds before your time is up. I'll start by introducing you all from left to right, from my view. So, we have Mr. Robert Clifford, Mr. Michael Acord, Mr. Douglas Miller, Mr. Mark Valangin, and Mr. Paul Shannon. Uh, I'll explain to you how this night's gonna go. Uh, each candidate will be asked to give a brief introduction about themselves of no more than three minutes. I will then, oh, I'll have Libby draw questions randomly and I'll read them off. The first question will be asked of the candidate on the left side of me, so it would be you. Um, and then moving right along to the far right. These questions will be limited to three minutes for answers. And we'll probably do two or three rounds of just going through and asking questions. Um, at the end, each candidate will have a chance to have a closing statement, which may include an answer to any question that was asked previously to other candidates if the candidate would like. Please limit the closing statement to three minutes and I will, we will draw names randomly for this. Um, I will now ask, or no, I suppose we'll be drawing to give opening introductions. So, please provide a brief background about yourself of no more than three minutes, including why you are running and what special strength you believe you would bring to the school board. First up, we have Mr. Valangin.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Valangin. Uh, I've been married to my wife Ashley for fifteen years. We have two children. Uh, Kate is a fourth grader at June Chicago. Uh, Taylor is a seventh grader at the junior high. I'm a graduate of Westville, class two thousand and one. Not only did my children and I attend the district, but so did my entire family. Uh, given me a vested interest and passion for the success of the district going forward. Professionally, I'm a union journeyman sheet metal worker. It has taken an active role as our local pension trustee board chairman for the past three years. I've been a sheet metal worker for ten years, serving on the trustee board for seven. Doing so has allowed me to gain valuable experience, experience in dealing with financial challenges that the district may face. My wife Ashley has been a fifth grade teacher at Southview Upper Elementary at Danville District one eighteen for twelve years. Her being a teacher gives me the opportunity to see challenges they face and to have some insight in what they might need to succeed as educators. I'm running for school board to help be an advocate for the students and staff's best interests. Not only to provide the best education possible, but provides support for everyone involved. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Shannon.
Good evening. A lot of you know me. Uh, those that don't, my name is Paul Shannon. I currently serve on the school board, have for eight years now. Again, this is the second opportunity I had, uh, to serve on the board. Um, been a resident of Westville for forty-three years, but have been in the Westville district since the middle of the fourth grade. And, uh, I'm retired, but I own a garden shop, if you will, right down the road, uh, called Schwartz's Garden Center. A lot of you have been in there. You know I sell flowers. Been married to my wife Debbie for fifty-three years and, um, raised three children, all who went through the, uh, Westville School District. Uh, one of them has honored me tonight by being here, my youngest child, my son. Thank you. And, uh, I've, uh, I've been told, Paul, you know, you do, uh, a lot of, uh, good things on the school board, but, uh, you, you, uh, seem to be the old-school type person when you do that. And I don't argue with that. I, I am. But we need to educate our kids to more, uh, modern type, you know, more technology and, uh, that type of thing. We need to get with the times. And, uh, I asked that person, "So, how's that working out for you?" We need some old values restored in our Westville, in our district. We need those. We tried more modern things. It's, it's not working. Look at our, look at our test scores. Look at how we're, uh, evaluated by the state level. Yeah, you need a few old crusty guys like me. I'm probably the oldest guy and will be the oldest guy on the board, assuming I get elected. But, uh, that's okay. I like taking care of our children. I like setting a direction that will get them a lot further down the road than what we have seen in the past. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Miller.
Thank you. My name is Doug Miller. I am thirty-eight years old. I've been a Westville resident since two thousand and eight. Uh, married to Jennifer. She's sitting front and center, right in the middle of the room, making face at me. Um, we've been together for twenty-two years, married for twelve, thirteen in June. Got three kids. Uh, currently, one of our students or one of our children are enrolled in the district. The other two will be, uh, in the district with her within the next three years. So, I have three kids in this district. I grew up in Danville, graduated from Danville High School, graduated from Illinois State University. Swore I'd never come back to the area, central Illinois, and, and here I am, and I don't plan on going anywhere. Professionally, I started on the Vermillion County Sheriff's Department in two thousand and seven. I left the Vermillion County Sheriff's Department in January two thousand and twelve for the Danville Police Department. I was promoted to the rank of sergeant two thousand and sixteen and then lieutenant two thousand and nineteen. I'm currently the first shift patrol lieutenant. I'm the, um, SWAT team commander for the Danville Police Department, and I am in charge of the SRO program, School Resource Officers. I stay in charge loosely. They're pretty independent and they work pretty good on their own. We have a good relationship with District one eighteen, so, um, we just kinda oversee what they do. I have a background in, uh, critical incident management. I've been fortunate enough to gain that through my experience on the police department. I've sat in forums with other school districts, uh, the FBI, uh, when it comes to school shootings and school safety, um, seminars. Been fortunate to learn a lot. I have some continuing education plans through Northwestern, uh, and leadership courses. So, I'm enrolled to go, I think it's a May or June enrollment to further that. Get some credits through Northwestern for the leadership aspects, um, of my role through work and through the community, so. Thanks for having us. It's a good crowd. It's good attendance. Hasn't always been that way from what I've understood, so that's, I think that's a tribute to our community. It shows that we care. It's good to see parents and, and staff alike involved and hopefully we all gain something tonight, so, thank you.
Next is gonna be Mr. Acord.
Uh, my name's Michael Acord. Uh, I've been a lifelong citizen of Westville. Uh, I would say, uh, I was, I think I was previously on the board for nine years. I feel like I have a lot of knowledge of, uh, regarding the district and what's going on on the board and what it entails. Uh, I enjoyed my time on the board and would like to continue to serve my community by being elected again to ensure our district continues to grow in a positive direction. And at the same time, I assure the decisions made are fiscally responsible to our community and our members. I was, I was part of the numerous decisions over the course of the nine years that I previously served on the board, and I would like to state the items that I'm most proud of, of which are the parties the board's decisions affected during the time that I served on the community for the students and our faculty. Uh, first off, for the community, I felt like our decisions made by myself and other board members during the nine years timeframe that I was fiscally responsible and resulted in our tax rates staying decreasing. And for our community, uh, for the students, I was on the board when we implemented that the students would not have to pay for the Jack, uh, education enrollment. I thought that was a great decision by ours. The board to do, um, I don't know if there's any school in the district that does that. I'm not, not in the area, but I'm not sure. Um, I think that's very good for you guys as young kids to get that education and it's free. Um, for the faculty, the board had to do a, get to get the uni, uh, sorry, get to the union to talk about, uh, the new contract that we drew for five-year contract that they had to have done before the employees lost their, uh, retirement benefits. The law stated they were gonna change and we made sure that we got that taken care of before they did that. And for all the parties that was all involved, uh, it was the completion of the capital fund projects that we had already started. I was a part of that approving and I think that it's been beneficial for the school and the community, so.
My turn. Your turn, Paul.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Um, I just about to learn very quickly. I'm not a very adept public speaker, so please bear with me here. But I've got a few notes on the background. I'm a Westville guy. I lived here except for about six years. Um, a couple of years in the Navy and then when I was working up in, uh, Kankakee area and, uh, and living in Bourbon, A., which, uh, actually was pronounced pro bonus when I lived there, but they found out it was a French, uh, French name later on. We moved home in nineteen eighty-one, so our son could, uh, grow up knowing his grandparents and his aunts and uncles. Uh, as I said, I'm, I'm a Westville alum. It's my wife, Chris, uh, originally from Westville. And, uh, our children, Derek and Jessica, are Westville Tigers. Uh, I'm a EIU, bless you. I'm an EIU grad, um, a bachelor of, uh, science and accounting. Uh, received my naval, uh, science degree from Officer Candidate School in Newport, Rhode Island, uh, when I was commissioned in the United States Navy. Um, I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. I'm not a Vietnam veteran, as Paul is, and he probably would be too humbled to have also mentioned that he was awarded a couple of Purple Hearts while serving our country. Um, I've been involved in youth sports and coaching when my kids were that age, which seemed to be about sixteen years, cause they were eight years separating the two of them. Um, I was an IHSA referee for basketball and soccer for twenty-five-plus years, so probably some of you have yelled at me, um, and maybe justifiably so. Member of St. Mary's Parish, served on the Parish School Council or School Commission for several years. And one sidelight, whenever I mention I've, uh, served on that commission, one of the problems St. Mary's School had and one of, one of the reasons, among other factors of why St. Mary's had to close, was Westville has a very good school system. The public school parents weren't running away from the district going to a parochial school, so I always thought that spoke highly of the district. I'm a member of American League Post fifty-one and served as the executive committee chairman. I have three wonderful grandsons. My son Derek will brag about them to excess if you let me. Um, have the honor and pleasure of serving on the Westville School Board for sixteen years, twelve years in succession. Eight years ago, um, I lost an election, which, ah, that was frustrating. But anyway, and hope to get reelected. Was reelected four years ago and hope to get reelected now. Work experience, uh, I was a corporate accountant for law upgrade company. You might know it is Bungie. And then for CCMSI where I retired five years ago, and now I gotta get really fast. I enjoy serving on the board of it and I feel I've contributed while a board member. I like getting back to the community and that's my way to do it. I hope to get reelected for one more term and that will let me have twenty years of service and a great retirement. Oh, there is no retirement. You know that from the school board. I would just be done. Thank you.
Thank you all for your opening statements. We are now going to begin drawing questions and we'll be going left to right, so from Mr. Clifford to Mr. Shannon, each random question.
Will you give us the question number? Is that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we have our list of any questions in there. Cause I think everybody's got their notes.
Mr. Clifford, you're gonna be answering question number twenty-five. If a teacher or staff member is threatened, what action should be taken to help ensure the teacher or staff member feels safe?
Okay. Well, this is a, this is a serious subject, obviously, if you were to have a, a staff member threatened or student threatened or parent threatened within our school district. And it, it's a matter that as board members you take very seriously and would be most concerned about with this type of situation. A viable threat like that when we come about would be handled through the proper authorities so that, uh, law enforcement is made aware and would be involved in evaluating that threat. And then, you know, further actions of what the board could do and the district's gonna do would be, uh, taken, uh, after police have finished their investigation and give district report of, uh, findings of the threat level or potential of that threat. Student or parent, as the case may be, would then be dealt with according to policy or, you know, whatever is in our legal limit to do as a school board. But the board, of course, you know, we wanna keep the safe, uh, the staff and students safe and we'll act accordingly to do what we have to do to make sure that we preserve their safety when, you know, in our, in our, in our district and our, uh, facilities.
Mr. Acord, you're gonna have question number twenty-three. Are there any areas as a district failing in education and where are we succeeding in it?
Well, I guess areas we are failing, uh, I believe our staff is good about helping each other and using a team approach to assist one another. Unfortunately, due to the shortage of good quality substitute teaching, I think staff has to be asked to help provide each other as a team and help each other out on a normal daily basis. Uh, in a perfect world, we would be preferred not to have to do all that, but substitute teaching is a problem to resolve. Uh, a lot of times, that's the only choice that we do have is to have teachers swapping around. Definitely not an ideal situation. Uh, those that are best determined that are failing, that are, are working daily with students providing the curriculum, such as the teachers and the administrators, I think they're the ones that's gonna have to get that figured out. As school board members, I would want to do whatever I could to be solution-based and encourage my fellow board members to support anything needed to help make our educators and administrators improve in the areas they feel we are failing at. So, we're gonna have to really talk about that. But, uh, success, succeeding, I think that Westville School District provides the most successful learning environment through our great teachers that we have here, the atmosphere, the education of the opportunities that you do have. Uh, with the students take advantage of, all of it can graduate with a high school diploma and associate's degree here as well, free. Uh, proud of the fact that we are the only district, I think, in the county that enrollment, dual enrollment, that don't charge. Could be a little wrong there, but I think we are. College Express is a great vocational track for these kids. Some can't, some don't like college, some wanna go out and do something that's vocational. Uh, I, we have the work co-op here. I think the students are able to do that. Um, I think that's great. They get a high school credit for that. Biggest reason why we are succeeding in the district is due to the teachers. As they are willing to do what is necessary to help our students by working long hours and trying to get preparation for the lessons they will be teaching. Also, the biggest compliment you can get from your population you serve and want you to do as a board is when your students come back to teach at your school district. So, I think that that's, I think we're successful there.
So far, is everyone able to hear? We do have a microphone, but is able, are we carrying to the back of the room? Carrying? Okay, good. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, you have question number twenty-four. How involved will you be with learning about the decisions being made by administrators in the district?
Um, I think it's, it's important that we're very involved as a, as a school board. Um, I've been fortunate enough to be on the board for three months now. Not a long time. I'm not a grizzled veteran, but, um, the one thing I've learned is constant communication is key, uh, whether it's decisions made by administrators that affect staff, uh, students, parenting guidelines. I know we have a, a student handbook and a staff handbook and we try to hold each other to that. The three months I've been fortunate enough to be on, I've, I've tried to speak with the superintendent and assistant superintendent on a regular basis, not just a once-a-month meeting. We have a very open line of communication, whether it be via email, via text, "Hey, what's going on?" "Hey, can I get your take on this?" Um, we bounce ideas off each other. The board members can bounce ideas off each other. Like I said, not just at meetings, but I think, um, being involved and learning about the decisions being made is one of the sole responsibilities of the board. If we're not involved, we're not doing our job, and not every decision necessarily has to be ran through the board. There's a, uh, in, in my line of work and in a lot of lines of work, we, we refer to the chain of command, so not necessarily all decisions will go through the board. And me as a board member, I, I wouldn't be responsible for a sole opinion. It's more of a board collective. There's not anything one individual board member can do to affect administrative decisions. But when things get brought to our attention, it's, um, that might be a cause for concern or even a cause for praise. It's when we get together, um, and talk about it for the greater good of the collective, the community, the school, and I said staff and students, so, um, be as involved as I possibly can to shortly summarize that.
Mr. Valangin, you have question number nineteen. Many students' testing scores are not meeting expectations, even with some of the youngest elementary students. What ideas do you have to improve scores and help aid teachers and staff to support the needs of our students?
Um, I think first and foremost would be, uh, to provide incentives for the students, uh, something that would motivate them, uh, to do well. Some, and honestly, some students just, uh, I have a daughter who's a great student, but not really a great testing. Uh, so something that would incent, you know, put an incentive on it would help possibly, not, put not so much stress on the, on the test to the teachers, uh, to get their students to perform. Uh, they can only do so much. Uh, more parental support, uh, getting parents to buy into, uh, getting their, you know, kids prepared to bed, good night's sleep, breakfast in the morning, so you're ready to take a test. I do think though that test scores from the state are not really a true reflection of the job teachers and administrators are doing. At the end of the day, my que, my, my thing would be, uh, the question we need to be able to answer is, is are we teaching these students to be, uh, successful, productive citizens? Not always are we gonna send everybody to college. College is not for everybody. But are they gonna go out, be productive citizens, uh, somebody we can be proud of? That's the main, the main concern. Thank you.
Mr. Shannon, you have question number seventeen. Do you review the Illinois report card? And if you do, what is your opinion of the usefulness and information that this report reveals?
The answer is yes, I do review it. Uh, I even summons, uh, some of my colleagues for advice of what exactly does all this mean? Because it, it can be confusing as to how we actually, uh, stack up, but, but there are things that jump out at you that just, you have to question. Our math scores, our science scores, our literature, English scores. Believe it or not, the, the last one I looked at, which was today, the science scores ranked the highest between those two. The math score, I mean, between those three, the math scores are terrible. They're absolutely terrible. And at all building levels. To address that, we know we face problems with shortage of teachers. We know that. And we're always beating our head against the wall. How are we gonna solve this? How, how are we gonna overcome this? My theory or my idea, if you will, is there's a lot of people in this community and other communities that have that knowledge up here, but they don't have that certificate saying, "I'm certified to teach." Well, I've seen a lot of people that had certificates that says, "I'm certified to teach," and guess what? Well, I don't know how to do that. I couldn't teach another child how to, how to do this if I don't know how to do it. But, but you have that certificate. Well, yeah, but I, that's something altogether different. There are people out there and I'm, you know, I'm one to think outside the box. Grab some of these people, invite them in. Can you help us with this, with this, uh, dilemma that we have? And there'll be some that says, "Oh, my God, you're talking about non-certified people teaching? Anybody got a better idea? We have to do something. We can't sit back on our hands anymore and watch these children process through our system, come out of the system, and they're deficient in being able to survive out there in the real world."
We are gonna be doing another like one or two rounds of questions, so. We're back to you, Mr. Shannon.
That could work out where I catch an extra. I'm just saying.
Which one you doing?
Go down there. I think you come back. It goes this way.
Oh, I?
No.
Mr. Clifford, you have question number twenty-two.
Twenty-two? You're not shaking the jar.
What are our students lacking in educational needs in this district?
Okay. Yeah, the question is what, what are our students lacking in educational needs in the district? I'm not sure they are lacking educational needs. We, we may, may need to boost, uh, in the, boost in the curriculum, which is why we added a curriculum director to address that, that type of subject. Maybe we, maybe that needs addressed. Uh, may need to shake off the COVID effects and, and get a mindset of, so that the kids or students are fully learning again. Same thing maybe with our teacher staff. I mean, that, the COVID year and the, and the prior year before that, there was, I mean, that was a very stressful time and it, it took a toll on everyone, parents, teachers, students. So, maybe we, we need to shake off those effects and, and move forward and, and get into a, a fully learning mode again. Uh, I think we have the facilities here and the quality teachers. I don't think anyone could doubt that. We have the technology and, and, and the, and the support staff, uh, in place to support our students as they pursue their education. So, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that they are lacking. I think we just now need to get moving and, and move this education process forward. Maybe it's, uh, to inspire our students to, to dig down and, and learn now. But I, I don't know what other, uh, what education needs that artistic really is lacking.
Mr. Acord, you have question number twenty.
He is not shaking.
Oh, that's a great one.
Regulating the temperature in buildings to a comfortable level for both staff and students is an ongoing issue. What do you feel needs to be done to assist with the issue?
Well, first off, I do heat and air for a living, I'm an engineer, I'm an engineer at OSF, uh, HVAC. So, um, first off, the building is so big, all the buildings are different big. So, um, to try to make a person completely comfortable is, I mean, I get a phone call during the day, room four thirty-four is, well, the woman next door is hot, she has to take her clothes off, so I mean, there's just a lot of things, but as a school, I think Seth has kind of spent, the school has, I think the district has spent a lot of money trying to get the heat and air situation figured out. Um, you got a lot of the old school on one system, and you got some of the newer school on the, another system. I really think that if, if we're really gonna push the issue, I feel like our maintenance guys need to do a, a morning check every day. I think they get here early enough during the day, so I think they ought to be able to run through the buildings and check things and, uh, make sure that there's nothing broken down, issues are not, you know, any kind of issue that needs to be taken care of, we need to get it done before school starts. It's just hard to make everybody happy, especially in a building that's as big as it is. And Seth's kind of stingy with watching the money on how this pending, where you, where he puts it at and where he needs it at, and I mean, that's kind of him being, trying to watch the pennies, and, uh, sometimes he may have to wear a sweater instead of, instead of a dress. But, uh, yeah, really, I, it, it's hard to, I can't give you a perfect answer because I don't think there is one for this, so. We have a superintendent from Dambler, I'm sure he has the same questions that he gets asked. Mr. John Paul, I bet your question gets that every day probably. So, uh, yeah, it's definitely, uh, a hard thing to make perfect, I'm sure, so.
Mr. Miller, you have question nine.
I was gonna guess twenty-one, but.
What will you do to learn more about the needs of our school employees?
Um, as a, as a board member, I, I'm aware that I know that staff, uh, current staff is surveyed two to three times a year, so we try to keep in touch with the current staff that way, um, we, that's probably the best way to get staff feedback from a board level. I think I touched on it earlier, open lines of communication are huge, um, I'm, I'm open to, you know, staff having access to my email and getting ahold of me and reaching out. Again, keeping in mind, they may not get, um, an answer to a resolution, I'm not here to resolve an issue if that's something can be resolved at a school level between the staff and principals, or staffs and department heads, or staff and upper administration, uh, but I do have an open ear. I'm willing to listen, I'm willing to give advice, um, just keeping in mind that they'll probably eventually be redirected with my advice to the superintendent as far as, the needs of school employees. I would like to do more building walkthroughs, I think as a board member, just being present in the building, not, not necessarily talking, but just observing and seeing what's going on in the classrooms. Maybe seeing where kids are struggling, or seeing what, what staff needs are just by observing a classroom. I know we're, we're always underwhelmed. Coming from my line of work, we could always use more resources, and I know that's no different for teachers. If we could get more help through recruiting and retention, um, efforts, I think that's, that'd be a priority through the next four years. Like I said, as, as an individual board member, um, we can't necessarily overstep our bounds. We're not here to, to step on, um, Dr. Miller's toes, or, um, Ms. Downberg's for that matter, but I do think it's imperative to have open lines of communication. I do wanna try to pop into classrooms to buildings, I want the staff to know me. I want them to be comfortable when they see me in the buildings and know that, hey, I am an open ear. A lot of times, that's all people need, just an ear to listen to and, and kind of a little back and forth. Know their value, know they're being heard, and, and know that we can move forward as a team to resolve any issues or needs they may have, so.
Mr. Valange, and you have question ten. What will you do to learn more about the needs of our students?
I think going back to what Doug said, uh, we do, I, I've been told that we do, uh, well, I filled them out myself, but we do surveys for parents, for them to voice concerns, uh, but also, uh, through the staff, I mean, parents are obviously voicing concerns to the, to the staff and teachers as well. Building walkthroughs also, I think are a great idea, um, check in with administration more often, you touched on that earlier about talking to Dr. Miller, at least once a week. Just be available myself as a, uh, you know, for parents to voice their concerns. Like he said, there is a chain of command that, uh, should be respected. But if it's something that has been through the, through that process and wasn't taken care of, then that's something then, then the board can maybe, uh, help resolve, uh, and get everybody to come to an understanding, even if it's not what they wanna, what they wanna hear, so, thank you.
Careful now, careful.
Mr. Shannon, you have question two. What do you see as a school board member's role and responsibility in the effective administration of schools and supervision of administrators?
As a school board, our primary responsibility is to enact policy, establish budgets, and ensure that district policies are carried out consistently without prejudice. Sounds simple, doesn't it? Sounds real simple, but it is not that simple. Uh, first of all, we have a, we hire a superintendent, he's charged to manage the policies of the board for the greater good of the district. Well, at the Westville District, uh, we respect, we, we practice it, and we respect the chain of command. The board is responsible for supervising and evaluating the superintendent, and it is the superintendent's job to supervise and evaluate the principals. And consequently, the principals will supervise and evaluate their staff and students. It's important that in any organization, as one of the other, uh, candidates had mentioned, that you follow a chain of command, because that is essential to being successful and operating as a board. Doesn't mean everybody's gonna agree, doesn't mean all the votes are gonna be rubber stamped the same. But in the buy, in the end result, the decisions that are made are made by the board, and they have to be recognized as a board overall decision. It is our job to hold our supervisor, our superintendent and all the, uh, administration accountable for their leadership. And with, uh, you know, I, I, I might get in trouble for saying this, but I, I like the Ronald Reagan approach. You trust, you support, and you verify. It's unhealthy, I don't care where you work, what your position is, it's unhealthy just to take always the word of someone who may have just heard it secondhand, or done it secondhand, and you say, okay, well, everything's great. That's where you get into trouble. Verify. I like that word, and I use it a lot. Uh, you can ask the superintendent, so. Thank you.
We're gonna do one more round of questions, and then we'll do ending statements. Back to you, Mr. Clifford.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clifford, you have question eleven. Some teachers are getting burnt out to the point that they are leaving the district or even the profession. What ideas do you have to help support current teachers and staff as they continue to stay within the district?
This is a tough one. Kind of, kind of an obtuse question, I think, but, uh, to help, uh, support our current teachers, um, uh, believe our administrators look and have looked to ease the stress on our teachers however they can, be it your class size, um, or better technology, or just understanding what the staff is dealing with daily. Just being aware of the toll that the COVID years took on our staff, and being supportive and, and encouraging and appreciative of the work that went into getting us back to our normalness, if you can call it that. I know, um, having seen when we were making plans going through the COVID years, and all of a sudden our teaching staff had to go from in-house to, to remote, and we had no idea what we were doing that first three months that that happened, because no one had ever blazed that trail before. And yet, they got it handled, then they get the next year, then they gotta worry about teaching in-house and, and, and half, in-house, half-remote. So I mean, there was just, um, yes, the burnout, there could be a burnout factor involved in that after the stress of, of the, of that time. And teachers can help us, support them by suggesting how or what they need to make their tasks easier to accomplish now, how they make their, uh, teaching assignments, uh, more efficient, what we need to do to help them out, um, and, and relieve this feeling of, of, of this new ever ne, ever-ending, uh, cycle of trying to just come back to a normal way of, of teaching. I know that, um, I can't imagine, uh, what other districts went through at that time, um, not knowing, uh, how good their staff levels were. But I know that we were able to achieve our goals as best we could, because we, we had people in the trenches that were doing a very, very good job, and yes, um, that's a tough, a tough thing, the, the burnout, so I hate to see them leave, and we're trying to hold on to them, and, uh, hopefully we can. That one was a tough, tough one for me to, uh, to talk about, dad or something. We hope to hold on to them, hope, hope they don't burn out.
Mr. Acord, you have question four. What are some plans that you would like to see in place for the next few years?
Well, I guess I have wrote down here, I said, uh, currently we have a great school district in which the community is very proud and supportive of, and I have no specific agenda that I bring to the school board on that issue. My one, only focus to ensure the district remains going in a positive direction, and the board makes great decisions for the short term and the long term, that ensure the district gets better each school year and remains focal point for the community and for the years coming. So I really don't have any few years, uh, plans. I haven't really talked to anybody, so I don't really know. I know that we talked when I was in prior to the board that we were trying to get an auditorium bill and try to open up the computer high a little bit. Um, so, I mean, if those plans are still in the makings, I think we would, but I really don't have any plans right now. Just wanna keep the district going positive direction, I don't wanna go back to this.
Mr. Miller, you have question number one. How do you view school building safety in our district, and do you see any specific problems that need to be addressed currently?
Well, I think school safety is a top priority for everybody up here. I don't think that's just a question that I, that I would put my name in. I don't think anybody up here would wanna jeopardize school safety, I don't think anybody out there wants to jeopardize school safety, so, um, again, it is a top priority, not just for me, not just for you, but also for the staff, for the students. Kids wanna feel safe, kids can't learn in an environment where they're not safe. Uh, whether it's a bowling issue, a school threat, um, anything external that might be affecting their education, so. Like I said, that, that's a, a question I'd love to answer, um, but I think anybody in this room or at this table would probably feel the same as start off, but. Um, I think, I think it's important that we do an annual review, I would like to see that in place. I know the schools do annual training, they do ALICE training. ALICE is the alert, lockdown, um, you counter, and then you evacuate. What, what, um, that is, is basically like an active shooter-type drill. I think it's important, it, it makes a lot of parents nervous, um, to hear that their kids are going through that. Unfortunately, it's a sad reality where we live. Our schools do a good job, they're mandated within the first, I believe it's ninety business days of the school year to conduct ALICE drills with law enforcement. I know our local law enforcement stays on top of that, I know many of the parents stay on top of that, I know the board stays on top of that. But we need to, to constantly rethink our approach as the threats are constantly evolving. I've been very fortunate in my position, uh, to be the, the head of two tabletop exercises. I've done one with District one eighteen, and then I've done a tabletop, um, exercise with the Valerian Community College so far, just this year alone, where we sit down with administration and building principals, and we, we say, hey, if this happens, how are we gonna react? And then the, uh, schools from there will go over that with their personnel, and then they can take that back and take any constructive criticism they want, and use it for their drills with students, so. And we're just in the very first phases of that, it's not just a one-and-done tabletop, we don't just talk about it and then let it go, we wanna talk about it, we wanna train it. We wanna make sure we're consistent with it, and we wanna make sure that the staff and students feel comfortable, um, every day and every school year, knowing that we have their back, and we're trying to make this as safe as we can. We can use building improvements, we can use entry improvements. Um, if money wasn't an object, I would love to see dual entry, uh, access points to every building, to where you can only get in one set of doors before the second opens, it stays closed until that one's closed. Um, done a good job adding the video, um, the, the buzz-in and the verification, but that's, that's just one step. I don't think we can ever, uh, be happy with just one step. Um, I personally ask local law enforcement to do door checks, just randomly drive by buildings, pick random doors, make sure they're closed like they're supposed to be, so we're not jeopardizing student safety, so. Um, and I just use my experience to train, train staff, train students, uh, train administration as much as we can.
Mr. Valange, and you have question number fourteen. How could you encourage a positive change that you feel is important to the education of the students or to the benefit of the staff in which others on the school board might disagree or vote against the issue?
Um, I would say first off, making sure, uh, you know, all the school board members know why I feel the change would be beneficial to those, uh, students. You know, one thing you can do is, uh, talk to other parents and staff, uh, to maybe help garner support, and, uh, have them talk to other board members who are on the board. And go directly to the other board members, uh, let them see how the district would benefit, uh, basically just, you know, support your idea with facts, uh, that you can, uh, rally support and get it done and see it through.
Mr. Shannon, you have question number five. What will you do when there is a dispute with a, with a school employee or a group of employees and administration?
Tell them good luck. Again, you have to remember, no one board member can make decisions regarding anything like that. And before a board should have to get involved with such an incident, you would hope that between the parties involved have made the attempt to follow the chain of command from the beginning to the end before it ever gets to the school board. If it has to come to the school board, then it's our responsibility to listen to every detail, every side of the story, and consequently- And consequently, may have to make a decision that won't be well-received by one of the parties. It's a tough job, and somebody's got to do it. And I don't think our board in the past has had any problem with controversy because we're paid so well to take care of those type of things that, you know, it's not a problem. But listening is a key factor in issues like this. You have to listen to both sides of the story. Then you start digesting the problem itself and making a good, intelligent, beneficial-to-everybody-involved decision. Thanks.
Thank you for all your answers to the questions. We are now going to begin doing ending statements. I would ask that you please offer a closing statement, which could include an answer to any previously asked questions. Please limit this statement to three minutes. We're going to draw randomly. Mr. Valange?
I would like to touch on number one, which is about building safety. I think we do a pretty good job. Few things could be improved, one which I've noticed myself, that's why I put this on here, is doors being propped open at buildings, it's like a major no-no. Obviously, if there's no, you know, resistance to get in the building, then that creates a big problem in a hurry. I understand why it happens, I get it. It's a pain, you have to walk all the way around and go out, walk all the way back in. But it's important. And the second, which has come to my light a couple of times recently, is administration needs to communicate to the parents and staff when a problem arises much quicker. Communication was held out a couple of times that it didn't have to be, in my opinion. Being open and honest about it upfront is the best policy going forward. And then the other one is number twenty about the HVAC. Two of the buildings I know are modern enough that this should not be an issue. Buildings should be able to be regulated temperature-wise by room, each room. If it's not working, it's either a maintenance issue or controls. So, the controls could be coming from the administration side. Maintenance issue is obviously lack of maintenance or there's a problem that hasn't been fixed. And in closing, I'd like to thank the WEA and the high school students for having the forum. Also, everyone that attended. As I said before, I have roots in Westville, children of the district, fully vested in the district's success, both financially and academically. Working on my local pension board, ten years in construction, construction management, and willingness to learn is what gives me what I feel is a strong foundation to help the district grow going forward. Thank you for your time.
Next is Mr. Shannon.
Oh, thank you very much. First of all, I need to apologize to my son and my daughter-in-law. I forgot to mention the two grandsons I have in the Westville District as well. One at freshman level here at the high school and one over at Jacoma in the fifth grade. I mentioned, let me, let me do this. If anybody's familiar with a person named Thomas Payne, he was an American revolutionist who made a statement that said, "If you're afraid to offend, you cannot be honest." And I have no intentions of offending anyone in meetings like this. I value the public and the parents and the teachers and administrators too much. However, I do intend to be honest, and we've got a hard road ahead of us. This world is not getting any easier for us sitting here now, and it certainly is not going to get any easier for our children that we're raising. We must do a fantastic job, and if we think we're doing our best, we have to do better. There's always room for improvement because we're going to throw our children out into a world that's going to eat them up, chew them up, and spit them out. And we need to give them the best defense to encounter that that we possibly can. It's got to be through education. It has to be through education. You know, you can look at it as a major disruption, downfall of our country. You can look at it a lot of different ways. But try looking at it as an opportunity to take this moment forward and do something with it rather than let it get totally out of hand, which appears to be already. I have a personal experience that proves my theory. I am a tutor, if you will, at DACC of people who fell through the cracks, didn't make, didn't get their diploma in high school, I've got one now trying to get her GED. And I, it's, it's just, it's just amazing to me what this individual doesn't know. It just, it just blows my mind. And it's also amazing to me that I, and I feel good about it, can help that person get, achieve what they need to achieve to get out there and survive in the world. I feel good about that. You're going to make, you make a difference, you've got to feel good about it. And that's what we are here for. That's what this board is here for, that's what our educators are here for, make a difference. We have that opportunity, let's not let that escape us. Well, how about that, perfect timing?
Mr. Acord?
Yeah, I want to touch back on that question four. I had mental health on a couple of other question and answers, so I wanted to kind of say that I would probably try to reach out and talk to the board a little more and my administrators about that. I think that if we can maybe reach out a little more into the school district on mental health for even the teachers and students at this time of the, you know, how this country is right now and stuff that's going on, I think that that's a big thing that we probably need to push on to because it's out there and we all know it, so, we see it every day, so. But anyway, on my closing, I would like to thank the WEA Executive Board for inviting me tonight and for giving me the opportunity to speak on topics that are important to our educators. The possibility of serving on the board again excites me as I'm eager to be an active participant in continuing to move our district in a positive direction by making decisions that are both physically, fiscally, and responsible and in the best interest of our administrators, faculty, and students in the community. I hope my previous nine years of experience on the board, along with the outcomes of the board's decisions during the timeframe, in conjunction with the relationships that I have cultivated with our board members, our administration, our faculty, union, and our community, makes the best candidate, makes me the best candidate to be elected on the board this April. Once again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and greatly appreciate everything the educators in this district do on a daily basis for some of the community's most important residents, our students.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Just to reiterate, I want to thank everybody for coming out. First and foremost, my wife for being here, she's been very supportive. Thank you to the students, the Education Association. You guys are our future, you guys are shaping our future. I think it's most very important that we're all here, we're all involved, and that you know that we're here for you too. So, hopefully, we can shape our future in a positive direction. A little bit more about me and my community involvement, I'm a member of the Lions Club. I'm a member of the Westville American Legion, Sons of the American Legion. I previously served as the board president for our police pension board, which oversaw a thirty to forty million dollar annual budget. So, from the fiscal side of it, it seems scary, but I have experience with that. Again, thanks to everybody for coming. School safety is a big issue, it's something that I, I've crafted over fifteen years, and not that I'm counting, but I have about fifteen years left in my current job. I am thrilled about that. But, you know, in the next fifteen years, I look to further my education, and I've been very fortunate to be provided those opportunities. I work in a large district, they have a lot of challenges, they do well at handling those challenges, they work with us well, so I'm able to take that experience and bring it back to this community, both in terms of prevention, maintenance, and then when something happens, how do we respond? And how can we all be the best that we are about it? Again, thanks for coming. If you guys have any questions, I'll stick around afterwards, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Clifford?
Thank you, sir. I did want to touch on a couple of the questions that were out there this evening. Number twenty-three, what I, I actually didn't like the way that question was formed, but it was area, what areas is the district failing? We have our weaknesses in this district, and I think we can improve in many areas, but I don't think we're failing. I don't like that word tied to us at all, so I just wanted to throw that out. Number fourteen, in, in encouraging a positive change, I just want to reemphasize the point that was made, I forget who got that question, that people have to understand, we are only one board member. I can go to, I can go in front of my fellow board members, and I think I've really got this great idea, and I'm trying to sell it, and I'm, I'm making points to them and everything, and, but, and then, you know, you, you present your case, and then they voted up or down. And I cannot make promises of positive changes to the public or saying, I'm going to fix that, I'm going to fix this, because it takes the board to do that, not, not me. And it's proven in other times in front of the board, I can be wrong, you know, so that's, that's happened. And so, it may not see the full consequence of a decision. There was one, what was that, number four, I thought was, oh, plans, Mike, yeah. But we do, we do have plans, I know in the back of my head, and plans that the board has to try to complete some projects we have in mind. So, yes, there are stuff, you know, like Jacoma expansion, there's the Westville Junior High addition that we'd like to do. And some of that's might be predicated on the, and I'll bring this up, the county school facility sales tax that'll be on the ballot, so. And, and if you don't know, that our board did make a resolution, if that does pass, we will reduce our property tax with the amount of that by, by using our, using that facilities tax to make our debt payment, so. And we won't have to levy that amount when we do levy tax, levy our property tax bill. So, in closing, I think I offer some experience and knowledge of how things can get done for the betterment of our district. I can offer some guidance to new board members, as we will have at least a couple seats with new people, and then new members. I believe I've done a responsible job as a board member and would appreciate four more years of contributing, and then I'd be able to take my leave and walk off into the sunset. And there are a couple of projects I'd like to be involved in over the next four years that I'd like to be with, sitting on the board when those things take place. But I will, one last positive thought, we've got four seats open, and two of the candidates are here tonight, but when you look, Westville's a pretty blessed, I feel, community in that these people like sitting here tonight, and the two candidates that are, I think, at a volleyball game, supporting their, supporting their, their children. You've got great choices, so I think I'm, I think I'm one of the good choices, these gentlemen. So, we're blessed to have these type of people that step forward and want to serve our community. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the candidates coming out, as well as the audience, and I want to remind you all to please vote.
They won volleyball, good job. I also wanted to mention the two candidates that are not here tonight, Michael Todd Wobley and Jonathan Freeman. They could make it, they're at volleyball tonight, but, so we have seven candidates. And I just want to say, as a Westville School District employee, I feel very fortunate to have these guys running. I mean, they, thank you very much for, you know, taking your time and for running, we appreciate you. And thank you to these three students for doing this for us tonight. Thank you very much.